We'll call this business, this meeting of the planning board of the city of Palaca for October 3rd, 2023 to order. Mr. Loach, would you do the invocation for us? Mr. Chase, will you do the pledge of allegiance? Please rise if you can.
I'm here, Ed.
Oh, I'm sorry, pastor. I didn't.
It's okay. I just wanted to.
No, that's, I didn't even see your name up there. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I appreciate it. No problem. Father, again, we thank you for this day and we thank for this opportunity to come together again. Another CR meeting. We thank you for the staff that have gathered here this evening. Pray dear Jesus, that you will bless their minds and hearts. Give them guidance and wisdom in all that they undergo to do for your glory. Thank you, God, for the opportunity to serve this city the most needful way. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Barnes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. She did have a seat. Ms. Krantz, will you do real call, please?
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Deloach.
Sure.
Ms. Owens is not present for the record. Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Burnett.
Here.
Chair Kilibr.
Here.
We do have a quorum in the chambers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Krantz. I'll now read the appeals procedure and ex parte communication. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any matter considered at such meeting will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need during the verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based on Florida statute At this time, we, if Ms. Krantz will step forward, we're going to swear Mr. Burnett in.
Just the camera for a second, so I was getting the camera back. Please rise, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Burnett.
I, Andrew Burnett.
A planning board appointee of the city of Palaca City Commission.
A planning board appointee of the city of Palaca City Commission.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of my appointed office.
Of my appointed office.
And I will support and honor.
And I will support and honor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All applicable laws of the state of Florida.
All applicable laws of the state of Florida.
Putnam County.
Putnam County.
And the city of Palaca.
And the city of Palaca.
I hereby through this oath.
I hereby through this oath.
Affirm that I will perform.
Affirm that I will perform.
The duties of this public trust.
The duties of this public trust.
In a fair, equitable and ethical.
In a fair, equitable and ethical.
Manner befitting the dignity.
Manner befitting the dignity.
And responsibilities of the office.
And responsibilities of the.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the board about anything? Just in general, not pertaining to the businesses we're about to partake to today? Okay, thank you with that. Seeing none, we'll move on to that and move on from that.
Can we take a vote for the approval minutes?
Oh. Yeah, you're right. We went past, I went past that. Excuse me. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from September 5th, 2023? Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Okay, approval of minutes have been done. We did the public comments already. Now we'll move on to regular public business. Walsh? Or, I'm sorry, I forget he's there. I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean that as an insult. I'm just so used to just going directly to her.
That's why I stood up, because I wanted to introduce Ms. Jane West, our new city attorney. Thanks. And let her know that we're ready to go.
Okay, so because you have your, your next agenda item involves a change in future land use and a rezoning, you have two different burdens that you need to deal with here. And I'll just wait till the slide comes up. Sunny, you do so many things. Yes. Okay, so for a comp plan amendment change, you are sitting in a quasi legislative capacity, which means you are basically changing the policy of the city. The burden of proof is on the applicant for a flum amendment. They have to show that the amendment is consistent with the comp plan. Whatever decision you make is going to be presumed to be correct and sustained so long as it is fairly debatable. Since you are also being asked to do a rezoning, if you could flip to the next slide, please, Sunny. You are in that capacity going to be sitting in a quasi judicial capacity, which means you are going to be interpreting the policy of the city to see if it's consistent with existing laws and regulations. You have to disclose any ex parte communication, so if you have talked to anyone, especially the applicant, you have to disclose that. It's permissible, but you have to disclose it before voting on it. And the burden of proof is once again on the applicant. They have to show that the land use change is supported by competent and substantial evidence. And that's all. You may proceed.
I'm thoroughly confused.
Thank you, Ms. West. Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce Mr. K.C. Chief, who will give the report on the annexation and zoning and land use change.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? I can hear myself.
All right. Now you're on.
All right. Sounds good. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the, of the planning board, and welcome, Mr. Burnett. Just really quickly, I wanted to run through case PB 2328, which is an annexation amendment to the future land use and zoning maps for the address Zero Comfort Road, which is a parcel that's approximately 9.96 acres. And the applicant is CTR Southern Holdings LLC. I believe the applicants here do take any questions you may have after presentation. This application is a request to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Industrial to the city of Palaca Industrial and rezone from Putnam County Industrial Heavy IH to city of Palaca Light Industrial M1. Public notice in the form of letters, notice signs and notices in the Palaca Daily News went out. The site is currently vacant, but the applicant is proposing, I believe, an RV storage facility. The parcel in question is bordered by the city limits to the east and to the south. It's also kind of in a mixed area where we have a variety of uses. It's primarily industrial area already. There's some commercial, some agricultural, as well as some residential usage, as well as the railroad right of way directly to the west. At the bottom of page 11, you can see the site, and I'm assuming your page numbers are the same this time. Page 11, you can see the site in figure one. Skipping ahead to table one on page, your page 12, you can see the table showing all the different various uses, surrounding uses near the site. Annexation of this property meets the standard for compactness because it does not create an enclave or a pocket. The proposed annexation borders the city limits to the east and south, as I said, and it's contiguous to existing municipal boundaries. Skipping ahead again, there's a second table on your page 13 that shows some of the, the estimated tax revenue that could come in based on some similar uses in the county. Go to the bottom of page 13, figure two shows the current future land use map. Again, that's unincorporated industrial, Putnam County Industrial. And then at the top, page 14, figure three shows the future proposed land use map, which would be city industrial. Skipping ahead again to page 15, figure four shows the current zoning map, which is unincorporated industrial heavy Putnam County. The annexation of this parcel would not contribute to urban sprawl as the property is within an already established industrial area. Development pattern is out of several different uses and includes industrial parcels next, parcels next to the railroad right of way. Other surrounding properties, as I said before, include both residential and commercial uses to the east. Skipping ahead, the proposed zoning map on page 16 shows the proposed zoning, which would be city of Palaca M1. And I just wanted to highlight really quickly on page 16 as well. The population, excuse me, sorry. The proposed annexation would not change population density pattern or risk overtaxing public facilities as it will be an industrial use. And the applicant wishes to annex into the city, to tap into the city's water and sewage services. Skipping ahead. Staff recommends seeing no issues as this usage is consistent with the area and in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of annexation of Zero Comfort Road for the purpose of connection to city of Palaca Water and Sewerage Services. Staff recommends the planning board amend the district boundary, future land use designation from Putnam County Industrial IN to city of Palaca Industrial IN. And staff recommends the planning board amend the district boundary for the zoning map from Putnam County Industrial Heavy IH to city of Palaca Light Industrial M1. And with that, I can take your questions, or if you have questions for the applicant, please feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board?
Did you say it was going to be an RV storage?
That, that's what we have on the, on the application, but I think there was more specificity to that that maybe the applicant could speak to.
Anybody else have any question? Anybody want to speak to the applicant?
Well, if he can answer that.
Yes, if you'll step to the podium and give your name and address, please, for the record.
Casey Reeves. I'm the owner of CTR Southern Holdings, and I live in Gainesville currently.
Give your address a minute. It's just whatever your address is. You want to use this address, whatever. That's just.
1505 Fort Clark Boulevard in Gainesville.
Thank you.
The approximately 80% of the property, we're looking at making RV storage facility. There are two buildings to the north on the proposed plat that account for about 36,000 square feet that would be mixed-use industrial spaces. Essentially industrial suites that could be leased to a variety of businesses for random purposes. But it essentially all the RV storage, it would be canopy RV storage on top of pave, on top of pavement, asphalt. Very organized, clean and neat, not, not just a yard filled with RVs.
Right.
So there is, I built a few of these facilities. There's one specifically in Newberry, Florida. It's called Ultimate RV Storage. It's one of the nicest facilities I've ever seen, and I'm actually attempting to duplicate that facility.
Okay. Okay, I've got one more question. So are you part of the Crystal Cove deal?
That's my last question.
The RV?
I'm, I'm not, but it was actually when we found out about that, that was actually good news because we would work essentially, the two businesses would. when we found out about that, that was actually good news because we would work essentially, the two businesses would complement one another.
Yes.
Since my understanding is that they're going to be an RV park, whereas we would be RV storage and RV support facilities, you know, maintenance facilities, cleaning.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, so the two would work hand in hand.
Thank you.
So the buildings that you're talking about to the north of this property, are they? Trying to remember, because the only thing I know that's north of there is now the Grove Center.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So those two buildings are part of that?
No, not part of that. It's the same property. There, there's a total of seven buildings or seven structures. Five of them are canopy structures for the RV storage. The other two are enclosed buildings that are divided into suites. That, that, that's, each one is 18,000 square feet. And so that, those would be again, likely leased to support facilities like RV cleaning, anything to do with the marine activity. Just various uses, but we, we would be leasing those. That wouldn't necessarily be part of the RV.
Those are already there.
That's what I'm asking. I mean, those are the ones that are already there that, no.
They don't exist.
Okay, that's what, okay. That was a.
The, the two to the north, where you see the, all the park, the small parking spaces on the north end. Yeah, tho, those two facing each other, those are industrial suites.
Okay, I was just confused, but I was thinking you were saying those were existing. That's really, I couldn't picture it in my mind.
No, that's just the proposed site.
Okay, I got you.
When I purchased the property, it had already been cleared, but the, the perimeter, there are trees around the perimeter that we're going to try and leave.
He's putting billboards up out there, too.
I haven't, I have, Mr. Chair, I have another question.
Go ahead.
So this property does meet up to the fenced area that's the grow area?
Yes.
Okay, that's off. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else got any questions? Mr. Barnes?
Isn't there currently a building in the northeast corner of that property?
No. There's no, there are no structures on the property.
I'm very confused.
There's an RV sitting out there, but there's, yeah. Yeah, to the south is the healthcare facility, and to the north is the grow facility.
Any thoughts?
No, I'll figure it out.
Hang on just a minute, Mr. Barnes.
No, no, I'm turned around somehow. I'll get it. I'm fine.
You good?
Yeah.
This is between the old Florida furniture offices and the big industrial.
And the back building, yeah, or the old back admin office. Yes, I, I, I just thought there was a building on that parcel already, but I'm mistaken.
Clear. Same. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak to this before against? They seeing none, I'll bring this back to the board and give it to y'all for a discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready for a motion if you are.
Three quarters, right?
Yes.
Three? God, I'm glad you said that. I thought it was only two. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I will make a move that the board approve the annexation of Putnam County Parcel 37-09-26-0000-0060-0051 into the city of Palaca.
Okay, add a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I ask for a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Can I have a motion on second part of this, please?
Mr. Chair, I will move that the board approve the proposed amendment of the land use from Putnam County Industrial IN to city of Palaca Industrial IN for Putnam County or for parcel 37-09-26-0000-0060-0051.
Hearing the motion, I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burnett, discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes unanimously, Mrs. Krantz.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that the board approve the proposed amendment of zoning from Putnam County Industrial Heavy IH to city of Palaca Industrial Light M1
There's a motion, have a second? Have motion in a second. All those in favor, is any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion that Putnam County shorten its parcel numbers?
I don't know. We might have to use our attorney for that, our new attorney.
He doesn't want to go there.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen. And now, what were we supposed to be doing? We were moving, well, Ms. Krantz, what would you tell, we had to go to, you had something you want to talk about? Ms. Walsh, I'm sorry.
I did, sir. Thank you. We had a, the latest training video was on zoning and ordinances. And y'all are looking at me like.
You had a word?
Right. Um. I don't have a prepared presentation. We've talked about not looking at them during the meeting. But I wanted to ask you if you have any questions, if you would like to discuss it further. I'll be happy to do so.
I'll go ahead and be the honest one. I have, I'm not up on them. Yeah, I had watched some, but I'll make sure I do it for the next.
Okay.
Ms. Masters, you don't need to lie to her.
Well, I can, I can tell you briefly what it's about. It, it's about the zoning code being the implementation of your comprehensive plan. And as we've talked before, we're going to be doing our, an update to our comprehensive plan, starting very soon. And that initial portion of that will be visioning, and we're, in that visioning exercise, will be creating stakeholder groups to get out in the community and engage the community to give us input, just what they want to see for our comprehensive plan and what our city wants, should, what they want our city to look like and act like 30 years from now, or so, 25 or 30 years, around there. So I'm going to be requesting your help, your help in creating those stakeholder groups and perhaps attending meetings and just supporting the effort in general. But to get back to the training video, is, as you know, like I said, the zoning code is the implementation of that comprehensive plan, so after the comprehensive plan is updated, we will be rewriting that zoning code, which is quite antiquated, as you know. And it's disparate, there's, it's, there's lots of things that should, that are sprinkled throughout the code that ought to be just kind of grouped together to make it easy to administer. And as part of this video, what we, what you have just done is essentially what this video is about. Where you went through the staff reports, you looked at the zoning, you looked at the annexation and the, and the future land use. And then you made a recommendation, and now it goes on to the city commission for their approval or disapproval, denial. And that will probably happen, I believe, at the end of the month, the second meeting in October, which is the 26th of October. Yes, sir. That was the direction that I was given several months ago. Y'all?
Point at me.
And now we know the rest of the story.
No, you can't do that.
It's, it's. It's less than 10 minutes.
Right.
Ms. West, Ms. West says she'd prefer not to hear all this y'all got going on. It's all right. Okay.
And that's essentially all I have.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the staff comments. I mean, you don't have anything else? Ms. Grant?
Thank you, sir. Just welcome to Mr. Burnett.
I'm sorry? Casey? Cheap? Okay, I want to make sure I heard you right. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not good with names. Mr. Cheap, do you have anything? Okay, Mrs. West, that's the new city attorney. Do you have anything to pick at us about or tell us we did wrong or? They put you up in the cheap seats. As she sees that already, I could tell by her expressions over there. Okay.
Send a reminder to use your microphones, maybe? That would be my only comment.
Okay.
Okay, well, I talk loud enough without the microphone. I just hope that we can follow through with this, you know, the new comp plan that everybody will stay around long enough to get it done.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Burnett, being the new man on the block, do you have anything to add?
I'm mic'd up now.
You're on, but the light, light's on.
I just want to thank the city staff for the information that they put together, well detailed, easy to read, organized. And so I appreciate that, if you would just relay that to them, and it's, um, I, I'm just looking forward to it, and like I said, my main reason for joining the committee was because Edward was the chair. I looked at all of them and I saw that and I said, that's, that's the one I need to be on.
Yeah, but he.
And you too, but, you know, I, but I had to sit close to Edward to keep him in mind, so thank y'all.
Mr. Deloach, do you have anything to add?
It's just been a privilege to serve on this board, and I appreciate all the years that I've been there. We've never had this kind of training that Mrs., Mrs. Walsh has brought up and done for us. I appreciate that very much. It clarifies a lot of things for me.
The only way you two are leaving is out in the cemetery. Do you have any comments, Mr. Wallace? Okay, all right. Well, with that being said, I, I also appreciate the city staff. I know I pick at y'all a lot and give, but y'all do a fine job at keeping me going straight and you know, I know that's a hard task, and Miss West will find out that's a hard task, keeping me on task. So I, I try very hard, but sometimes I deviate and go other places, but I expect like this Thomas, that she would slap me on the hand and correct me and turn me right around. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Well, with that being said, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We are adjourned.